Not the Voice.
I like it, I like it. Come on, more, more.
No, I just am glad you got a day job.
I'll even go back further. Silence is golden.
No. I've got this and I'm not afraid to use it. It is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the December 20th, 2017 city council meeting, the last one for this year. Please stand. We'll have an invocation in just a minute, but I would like to call for a moment of silence. The city lost a dear friend in Steve Fabian. He was a mayor, he was a volunteer, he loved the city. He gave many hours in many different arenas to us and we miss him. He lived a long, prosperous, productive life, but we're still gonna miss him. So please take a moment of silence and think of Steve and his family and then we'll have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we once again enter the blessed event season during which we celebrate the birth of our only Son, we again come before you to invoke thy blessings on these meetings in which we are mere men and women, attempt to form our laws and governments. We hope and pray that all things we do are worthy in your sight and ask that you make it so. Let us at this time remember those less fortunate than ourselves. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible).
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, the first, we have a presentation, the 2017 Digital Cities Award.
Last time we entered this, I think we came in 10th. And now we entered the Digital Cities competition and now we're up to 4th, so Brad Schutte.
Thank you very much, Mayor Keating, Council. The Digital Cities Award is a survey that's done every year by the Center for Digital Government to determine the effective use of technology in city governments. They break it, the survey into four different categories based on population of the city. The category that Punta Gorda is in is cities with a population of 75,000 or less. And as Howard said, we finished 10th in 2015 and 2016 and this year we moved up to 4th. They grade us on a number of different areas from citizen engagement, security, network, use of future technologies, progress and a variety of things. The award itself isn't an IT award per se, but it's an award that awards the entire city for its use of technology. So as the IT department, we are here to try and drive new technologies, to make them available to the departments. But for it to be effective, the departments and the citizens need to be able to use them. So this is as much a recognition of how they're being used as what we provide. I think the city should be very proud of its finish in 4th place and we look forward to improving our position next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, to the finest, finest city council in the whole universe of Santa Claus land.
Ah, thanks, Hannah.
I am presenting all of you with the official candy cane.
Thank you.
And this gives you extra energy for those bicycles, Howard.
Thank you, Ho-Ho.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's time.
Santa?
Santa. Santa.
I am on the nice list.
Wait, you think we aren't? Are you saying we aren't?
Well, you know, I have to say that I am going, can I make a proclamation?
Sure, yes, yes, Santa.
Santa proclaims in all the world of giftdom that everybody in Punta Gorda is automatically absolved of any naughtiness, any worry. And I'm putting everyone, everyone in Punta Gorda on Santa's nice list. This week, right now, the elves are putting presents in the sleigh. So you gotta stay on the nice list because they love to put presents in the sleigh. But they certainly hate taking presents out. So everybody pinky promise, pinky promise. Pinky promise to stay on my nice list for the rest of the year.
Don't forget Karen.
I want to thank everybody for such a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful year. Punta Gorda, outside of the North Pole, is absolutely the very, very best place to live in all of the world.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Santa. These guys, yes, they're here for a reason. So next we have recognition of employees and volunteers who assisted with Light Up the Night event. I don't know who in this room attended the event on Friday, December 1st, but I have to tell you, Christmas is getting bigger and better in Punta Gorda. And we have a tree lighting committee, some of which, you know, are not here this morning, but the city staff did lot, put in lots of hours and support and in-kind for this event. Starting with this crew who puts up that beautiful tree and they make the magic happen. So let's give them a round of applause. They do a beautiful job and they have to start, what, late October? It's quite a process, but let me tell you, it adds so much festivity and so much ambiance to our town. When that tree goes up, people get excited. And now that we're making the tree lighting bigger and better, I want to thank you all for helping. A lot of the city staff members, I don't want to forget anybody, but Mikhail and Lisa and Jennifer and Julie, Julie is our marketing person and she actually came up with Light Up the Night, the logo and everything, very creative. Yes, she did, she did that. Yep. And she helped us put together our posters and our flyers. And we had, Dave Myers was very instrumental. He comes to all of our committee meetings. I can't hear you. That's why I need to help.
Dave Myers works for our Public Works Department in our Right-Away Division and he is our Maintenance of Traffic guru.
Yes.
He takes care of all our street closures, makes sure everybody's notified. And we can't do not only the tree lighting, but several of our bigger events that have any type of street closures. And again, our parks and facilities are hands down, there's some of the greatest people that we work with.
Yes, and Donnie, the electrician, was very instrumental too. He was very helpful. And I have to say, Art and Don answer their phone every single time I call them, so that's very impressive.
Don can't be here because he's fixing up the restrooms in Gilchrist Park.
Oh, good. Don is fixing up our restrooms in Gilchrist Park. And I have to say, our public safety people, Ray Briggs and Jen Molnar and the whole team there and the police crew that helped us, they were instrumental in planning for the event to make sure it was safe for all who attend and the traveling public that was not attending the event that night. I think it went pretty well from the feedback that we've gotten from the community. There were thousands, I know the paper reported hundreds, but there were thousands of people downtown. And we will continue to close the streets to make it a safe event for all to enjoy. So I wanted to thank everybody and, you know, the city, we need a picture? Okay, the city, you know, is taking this on, but we have a lot of community support. Our sponsors were phenomenal. We actually have money in the bank for next year. So it will be even bigger and better next year. More activity and more fun things to look forward to.
Good.
Yep, so we're gonna take a photo, everybody.
Drum and Beak Corps maybe, or the, no, the.
Come on. Alicia helped too, she did Facebook. One more.
One more. Here we go.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I had a request to move up the new business item 7A, the donation to the Gap program. But before that, we will hear from anybody who has their name in the running for a board or committee. And if they, if you would like to take a few minutes to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Is there anybody? Yes, you can take that podium there, that's fine. Just state your name for the record and.
Good morning. My name is Mark Kuharsky. I'm asking for your vote to be a member of the PGI Canal Advisory Committee. My wife and I discovered Punta Gorda in 1990, early in our career, through a real estate ad that said Punta Gorda was a premier boating location, but it was also an affordable place to have your boat behind your house. So being avid boaters, we kept an eye on PGI over the years and we visited for the first time in 2014. And like a lot of you, we wound up buying a lot, built a house. The house was completed early this year and we sold our house up in Nashville, retired and moved down full-time in April. And Santa was right, it may be a world-class boating location, but what we found is it's the people here that make Punta Gorda special, at least for us. It is, this is the most warm and inviting place that we have ever lived. So we've become active in the community. We belong to the Isles Yacht Club. This watch coming up, I'll be a bridge officer, which if you know, means, excuse me, that's a four-year commitment that results in becoming Commodore. We've also become active in the PGI Civic Association and are active in the PG Islanders Boating Club. I'd like to get more involved in the city government. We think that given our boating focus, the canal committee is natural for us. I think that the water is the lifeblood of PGI and I think the canals are critical to our future prosperity. So I'd like to be a part of preserving those, protecting those and developing those. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to introduce themselves for a board or committee? Either way, either podium is fine.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Wright and I would also like to be considered for the Canal Advisory Committee. Very much like this gentleman, we moved here a couple of years ago having sort of discovered Punta Gorda as a community that was about boating. We were very interested also in having a boat in our backyard and originally bought a condo and now have bought a home. I also, it was originally going to be a retirement community for us, but I said, why wait? I really want to come down here. So I started looking for a job. And I'm pleased to let you know that I am a CPA working at Strang Olsen &amp; Lynch. Working full-time here. So in addition to my boating background, which I have been a member of various yacht clubs in the past, I've raced sailboats and had power boats. I'm also a CPA, so I'd like to also bring that expertise to the committee if I'm considered to be a member of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to introduce themselves? Okay, seeing none, if everybody's okay, we're gonna take the new business 7A, the donation of laptops and computers to the Gap program. Surplus laptop computers. Yes?
Are we gonna offer citizen comments before we do that, since that's a comment item?
Sure.
Yeah. Because there is someone who wants to speak.
Yep. Okay, so we're gonna hear item 7A, if you would like to speak on that item, which is the title, "Donation of surplus laptop computers to the homeless student gap fund of Charlotte County." If you would like to speak on that item, take this podium here, state your name, you have three minutes.
Good morning. I'd like to make.
Name for the record.
My name for the record is Larry Stewart.
Thank you.
My partner in this endeavor and I both live in Punta Gorda. And I'd like to talk about this fund that we set up, this nonprofit. We heard about three months ago that there were 458 homeless students here in Charlotte County. And to us, that was not right. We had to do something about it. That number is the actual number that was reported by Charlotte County to the Department of Education. So I, we did three months' worth of research on this project and we organized our efforts to see what we could do to cover the gaps in the support, which is quite a bit in this community, for the homeless. And part of this research led us down some very specific directions. And I'd like to introduce Nancy here that'll tell us a little bit more about the research that we did.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Swinar for the record. Just wanted to let you know, some of our research we did was with the actual school system and liaison there and came to find out that there were three specific areas that were gaps of need that really made it difficult for the homeless students to be successful. Those areas were technology, transportation and mentorship. So Larry and I started our nonprofit, got our certifications, all of our papers in order and I have some brochures to hand out to you to explain a little bit about that. So we had heard that there was some technology that was available and we appreciate being considered for that, knowing that there are a lot of other organizations that are worthy of these things also. But we can assure you that they will be given to the liaison for the homeless at the school system and will be strategically given to students in need. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is CJ Metcalf, Punta Gorda resident and burnt store aisles and a freelance volunteer for veterans. And this is in regards to the donation of the surplus laptops to the homeless student gap. It is a quest of mine that you reconsider where this donation goes. While Gap is a worthwhile endeavor, the donations to them will limit who can benefit from it. Their program is set up for students and that's where their direction goes. I strongly, Gap receives requests from school counselors for the computers. Gap then reaches out to their various entities to fulfill that request. I don't know at this point, there is questionable as far as record-keeping goes, like if Alex Smith, a student, if he receives a computer, how that is documented. So therefore Alex may get computers from multiple locations on that. So that would be a waste of donation effort. I strongly urge council to consider donating these computers to the Charlotte County Computer Group, which is a 501(c) organization. They are located in the Charlotte County Cultural Center. This nonprofit organization is a licensed Microsoft refurbisher. They take the computers, they clean them up, they clean the hard drive, they update it to Windows 10, they install malware, antivirus, disk cleaning tools, et cetera, that will make the computer more up-to-date and have a longer longevity. Then they redistribute them to the entire community as needed. They have an excellent record-keeping system preventing duplication of computers to any individual. They offer computers for free to indigent persons, veterans, homeless veterans, Gap, Gap can also gets computers from them, and other entities in the county. To cover their operating costs, they do offer refurbished computers at a discounted price. Since the Charlotte County Computer Group supplies Gap and the entire community with computers with a 30-day guarantee, it is my request that you consider donating your surplus to the Charlotte County Computer Group. And I have a computer here that I picked up yesterday for a homeless veteran and at that point, the computers are marked, their serial numbers are recorded, they keep a record. You have to sign off on who's getting it. And then this is the information sheet that they give with it that shows everything that they've put on it, how to update it. So it's certainly, I feel, would be a better direction to send the computers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did it buzz down there?
No.
No buzzer. Anybody else like to speak on 7A, new business, donation of surplus laptop computers? Anybody else? Okay, we will, we don't need to close anything. Gary?
Okay, I just want to make a comment. The way this all started, because I'm the one that originally brought this, was in conversations with both Larry and Nancy, I became aware of this organization and the reason that they were doing this. And what they're doing is, is they are targeting students who are homeless who want to finish school. They could have the option of dropping out. These are kids that for whatever their motivations are, that they want to assist, have a desire and a, the fire in the belly, if you will, to finish school. The way this originally started is, is I approached staff with the idea of when these computers were retired over the course of the next year, that I would personally like to bid to purchase them. Because they, and it was explained to me, and maybe I see Mr. Drury, can you can explain to me a little bit the logistics, that they really don't have a lot of value to the city historically and that maybe we could pursue this. This is the third time that we've brought this issue up. I've given multiple indication that I was gonna bring to this day. And it would sadden me if the wisdom of this council were to choose otherwise, but it's certainly my colleague's choice. Again, I just want to emphasize, this is a group, these are honorable people. They will be doing, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, I'm assured. And that they are targeting specifically young people who have the fire in the belly to get out of their situation. They're not being pulled through with a collar around their neck. They're the ones that are trying to drive their force and they're only trying to offer a helping hand. So I would hopefully encourage the wisdom of this council to support us in this endeavor.
Thank you. John?
I was actually at Charlotte High School yesterday because I go to meet directly with specific teachers and counselors because it's very, from the standpoint of youth services, a lot of organizations do things from here, but unless you specifically target students, you can't reach them. I know it's for a fact because I work with them. And so in this case, I think that we would be amiss if we were to diffuse this and not give it directly to this. I mean, the fact that they're dealing directly with the homeless student liaison, to me, is much more effective than anything else possible. Because we have a lot of people do a lot of good things, but in this case, it's a very specific need, which Gary brought up, which is very, I mean, very real. I mean, they have washing machines at the school, homeless children in our schools is a real deal. And I feel that if the organization is able to directly target students, I can't think of a better use of this than that.
I would agree with that. And just my experience at the Cultural Center, I don't doubt that they're great, what they do, but I've tried to take things to them and they've rejected them for whatever reason. They didn't see that they had value, so they threw them away or, you know, whatever. They were not usable for their program. So I do think they're pretty specific about what they want. And this is a couple of years ago, so things may have changed there, but they definitely did not want some of the stuff that came out of my husband's office at the time. So as long as I, you know, you said all the right things, working with a homeless liaison, I think, you know, for this, this one donation that we have, I don't know if this is gonna be ongoing or is this a one-time? Brad, can you speak to how we're handling that?
Brad Schutte, City IT Manager. I think at this point in time, how we handle it is still up in the air. The discussion that we're currently having is for a specific set of surplus equipment that we've already identified.
Okay.
How we're gonna handle it in future years, we're waiting for direction.
Okay. Nancy?
I don't disagree with what has been said. Question I have is, as a public entity, what process should we actually go through to make a selection for where we would make a donation? I don't have a problem with who has the gap at all. It's just I feel that as a public, a city, municipality, there should be some process for us to make a selection for that. Just, we do that for everything. So it's, you know.
For the record, Dave Drury, we checked, did research on this. First off, it's legal for us to decide. We are offered, I think, $4.50 apiece, so this is a de minimis amount. So we are not giving a donation of any value, it's just surplus. It was not grant, none of the computers were purchased through grants, so we don't have to worry about a granting agency to a piece. So there was really nothing we could find that was problematic.
Okay, so as a public entity, it's okay for us to do something like that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The other, another question I have then is, and Gary spoke to it in part, is these are students who want it as opposed to being forced. What assurance do we have that these students will get to retain these? As opposed to a parent taking it and trying to pawn it and doing something else with it so that that student ends up without it? As much as we try to give them something, they're not all in control of their environment. And it's a concern I have for those children.
And I think what Dave just said speaks to that, that they're not really worth, I mean, you take it to a.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, but if they took it to a pawn shop.
Well, okay, but it, you know, I, you know, parents will try to do anything they can to get money for something. And so it's, I'm concerned for the children, that we are doing good, we are doing good deeds to help these children and we want to make sure that those, they stay there.
Perhaps I could help clarify that a little bit. We're working directly with the homeless division at the school and the school works with the counselor and the teachers of the various schools. One of the things that we didn't mention is that the school district has asked us to specifically concentrate on Charlotte High School. The other districts, I feel, are farther ahead in that area. So in the homeless division, working with the counselors and the teachers have given us a, and we track the computers with serial numbers and markings and whatever. So we do have a trail of documentation that shows us where this, these donations go. And we've been assured by the school, as much as they can, that they're gonna go to deserving students that will use them properly.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't think we should second-guess that. I mean, it's like saying, like the yaya girls, do the kids, do they sell the impact? I mean, it's one of those things, I think if we give the people, we're giving to them, we're doing the best we can. I don't think we should.
And the schools check out technology to kids all the time. That doesn't mean that those kids don't take it home and their parents do something crazy with it too. Gary?
I just want to say that this is only one aspect of the program. They're also gonna have a mentoring program. So these devices are gonna be used on a regular basis with the mentors that are individuals from our community, as usual, that have talents and the ability to provide and share those talents with these students. So they're gonna have a need for those computers, tablets and devices that they're trying to supply to enhance the value of the mentorship that's gonna be offered to them.
I think that's very important too because the elementary schools get a lot of attention. The middle school starts to dwindle, the high school is really, you know, most. The middle school starts to dwindle, the high school is really, you know, most programs, like you were saying Backpack Kids and that, is concentrated on elementary school kids, so I'm happy to hear that. Wait till our discussion's done, and then I'll let you have another chance. Any other discussion? Okay.
For the record, CJ Metcalf back up here on this donation. One thing that I would like to clarify here is, the Charlotte County Computer Group is an umbrella over the county, okay? They cover everything. This wonderful opportunity for these computers would go out to the entire community in all various needs, okay? Not just the students. And GAAP does get their computers from the Charlotte County Computer Group, and know that these computers are up to snuff, they're upgraded and everything. So it would be a better computer to give to these students because of what they do to it.
Thank you. Gary?
I'd like to use a little bit of a different analogy of why I think that this is a good organization, and the way we should go about it. Our chief of the Fire Department, our Fire Department Chief, is right now on a humanitarian trip to Guatemala to supply medical aid to a specific group of people in Guatemala. I have also been involved in such types of trips on several types in my occasion. And for example, when we would go into an area that we were going to supply medical, supply, for example, we would not bring in insulin. As Ray put it in conversation with Ray, Ray can go to Guatemala, he can turn around in six hours, he can get a diabetic back into stability and put him right back out there. But if he doesn't have insulin for the next year, he's going to be sick in 24 hours, 48 hours. Sometimes, you know, it's nice to have big umbrellas, but it's also nice to be able to target specific people and have specific results be more attainable because of that. And that's what I see that this particular group is doing, and I feel, as I said, very strongly to do that, because it's focused, it's targeted, and it can have some impacts on some very good lives. And in my tradition, if you save one life, you save a universe, and this is a chance to save several universes, from my perspective.
So maybe an in-between would be, at this point, if you're in favor of donating this group of surplus that we already have identified to GAAP, and then talk about the next phase of how we want to go about future donations?
Sure.
I would be totally comfortable with that.
I think that we should.
And we could possibly have the computer, somebody who's in charge over there at the computer group, actually come and be here present, and, you know, explain to us exactly what they do.
Yeah, the one thing that I think CJ mentioned was that the computer group does charge for a fee of some sort?
Only retail, if someone's buying a computer.
Ms. Metcalf, if you would like to speak, could you come to the microphone, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Only if Joe Public needs a computer, he goes up there and purchases it retail, and they use that money to cover their operating costs.
And to another nonprofit, it would not be.
Right. Like, GAAP can go there and say, "We need five computers for our students." They get those refurbished guaranteed computers. So that's how that works.
Thanks. So we need a motion? Yes?
I will make a motion that we go ahead and donate the computers to the GAAP group this time, but I would like to stipulate that the next time, we should take a look at other options that are available in the community.
Yes.
And I think we should share the wealth, so to speak. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a quasi-judicial, we have one, which is V-07-17, Request for a Variance by Charlotte Storage.
Yes, anyone that's going to be providing evidence or testimony on this matter, please rise to be sworn by the City Clerk at this time.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And when you're ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you've been sworn.
This is V-07-17, a request for a variance by Charlotte Storage LLC, property owner pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 26-16.10, Pontagorda Code, to allow a six-foot-tall security fence outside of the building area in a street yard, instead of a four-foot-tall fence, and to allow chain-link fence material, instead of brick, stucco, wrought iron, stone, metal, vinyl, finished wood, or similar combination, as are required by Chapter 26, Section 8.5B3, Pontagorda Code, for the property located in a DP-SP zoning district. This is located at 150 Rio Villa Drive, Pontagorda, Florida.
Thank you. Did everybody get sworn?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay.
Good morning, for the record, Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. We, staff would like to enter our staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. The Charlotte RV Storage was annexed into the city in 2003, and the use of the storage facility was existing at the time. While staff finds that the height requirements could hinder the request for additional outdoor storage, they're not changing their footprint, they're just expanding in the front area to make that secured storage. We cannot find any hardship to deviate from the material, the fence material that they're requesting, that we feel they can use a more decorative fence material. The application does not meet the literal criteria of hardship, therefore, staff has to recommend denial of the request. Board of Zoning Appeals recommended four to three to approve the request with a staff-approved landscape buffer between the street and the fence material. I'm here to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, if you would like to speak on this variance, now would be the time, you can take this podium, or we have the applicant here? You, the applicant? Okay, we'll let you.
For the record, my name is Tim Boff. We have gone and got some quotes from nurseries around, and it looks like that we have anywhere from 50 larger trees and shrubs to 67 plants that we are planning on putting in front of this fence, with also leaving a decorative white fencing that is already there. We're adding the chain link mainly for security.
So this photo here, can you explain?
That's, all that white fencing will stay. And the chain link is actually going to be located right behind that, and we're only putting it there so that we can actually put trailers to accommodate the PGI people for storage, and also take away the U-Haul business that's being, what that lot's being used for right now. So as for appearances, you won't see U-Haul trucks lining the street anymore. And this is being added on to a chain link fence that exists already, so what we're doing is just securing that front area.
So is the other section six feet tall as well?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for the applicant before we take the public comments?
Yes. On Arika Street.
Arika Street.
You don't have, you kind of have a picture, but you really don't. There is actually a vinyl.
Right, right there.
Wall, yes, but on Arika Street, if you drive down Arika Street, it actually has a lot of landscape buffer on the street side. So there are homes across the street from it, and it actually looks reasonable. When we drive down Baynard, there's nada.
Nothing.
And so my concern is, we have, from one extreme to the other, I don't know why. Can you explain why?
Well, the residents that live behind there wanted privacy, so the vinyl fencing for total privacy rather than having chain link, and then adding the landscape package when it originally was, the storage was built, which we didn't own it then, but somebody else did, was added to it, and of course, over the years, you can see, it's actually getting out of hand. So that, we want to do the same, put the chain link, so that it's going to create a buffer that you won't even know that there's a storage back there.
Well, I did drive around the property, for the record, and I noticed that on Adeline Street, which there is a picture of, it's one of the very first pictures.
Right there, that is chain link.
There is very overgrown potocarpus, hardly, and there are houses across the street, and they really don't do much. So my concern is, is making sure that whatever, if we were to approve landscape, a landscape over, that it's maintained.
Okay.
Because this certainly doesn't, even when you get down around the cul-de-sac at the bottom, there's nothing there.
Yeah, and again, these were here when we first purchased the property. As for privacy, there should be more hedges than trees right there, so that you can't see anything behind it, and.
Well, the potocarpus can be if it's maintained, but it's, these are not maintained. So, I'm a master.
That's in the process, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions?
I don't have a question so much as, I'm really kind of a little confused, it looks like there's like five or six different kinds of fencing around different parts of the perimeter of your property. For the sake of consistency, I think something should be done to make it more consistent and appealing to the eye for everybody that's got to live around that area. You know, I'm not in favor of a chain link fence when you've already got decorative fencing in other parts of the property, I think it should all be consistent, so that it looks better. And if you're talking about a six-foot buffer with decorative landscaping, that would be fine, but I'm not in favor of the chain link fence on part of it, and then white fencing on other parts of it, and then you've got like a picket fence on other parts of it, it just doesn't look right to me.
Yes.
I was wondering what the recommendations of staff were in regard to this.
Well, this doesn't meet the literal criteria of hardship, so staff does recommend denial.
Okay, we're going to take public comment on V-07-17. If you would like to speak on this item, now would be the time, take this podium here to my right, state your name, you have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on this item, V-07-17? Last call for anybody to speak on V-07-17. Need a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Just one more question. The U-Haul business is not yours, it's somebody else's on your property, is that correct?
It is owned by a corporation.
Okay, so you're getting rid of it? Or you're relocating it?
The U-Haul business, we are a sub, that just let them park their trucks, and then we rent them out. We are doing away with it.
Okay.
So that we can park more, for the residents of Pontagorda Isles, more boat trailers, I know they have a hard time finding a location to put all this stuff. The chain link fence is just to secure it, we're not trying to blemish the look of going down the street, and that's why all the landscaping is going to be included with that.
Okay.
And we're trying to keep the white picket fence that's out there, too, just to buffer it.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I look at this, I think, as I drive down Baynard, and I see all this, and then I look at, if we put a picket fence on Rio Villa, then there's this dramatic difference. I'm almost of the inclination to say, at least let's do something that's consistent, and most of it's chain link, but a lot of landscaping buffer that, so you wouldn't see it, including Baynard. I mean, it's just, it really needs to be cleaned up, and I know that we can't clean up the east side of Baynard, because that's county, for the most part, but we can try to make it all look better.
Do you want to make a motion to some effect to that, of that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the chain link fence, but with a landscape buffer on all of the chain link fence, around all sides. So you want to see the white fencing taken down and put chain link in its place? No, no, oh, excuse me, not where it is existing, just where the chain link is today. Where it is on Arika, it's.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, see if there's.
I second it.
All right, since the motion has been seconded, may I suggest that staff make a suggestion regarding standards for the landscape buffer that be part of the approval, so that it's something that's enforceable?
And I think from what you mentioned, hedge and tree should be part of that.
Yep.
And we have standards, like certain degrees of opaqueness, that maybe we can recommend.
Correct, we have certain degrees of landscape buffering. Did your motion include that it be a six-foot, because that's part of the request, is a six-foot?
I'll make that a six-foot fence, I don't, yeah, on the part that is, yeah, six-foot fence, but that we have staff-recommended landscape buffer.
Does your second reflect that? Yes.
And, but not to include Arika Street, where they already have. I'm very confused. Are we going to take down any of the white fence, if we're going to last? No, on Arika Street, where they have white fence? Well, you've got some that's a six-foot-tall white fence, then you've got some that's. I would say, I would, I don't know why you need that white picket fence.
I think they put that up to make it look a little bit better, honestly.
Yes.
I mean, it's not going to do anything for security, that's, it's there for aesthetic reasons, and that doesn't bother me, the white, the white doesn't bother me.
That looks terrible, right there. Yeah, it doesn't. It's not consistent with anything else that's on the property, that's my question. I wouldn't have, okay, so, I wouldn't have.
Keep in mind, this is a very big piece of property.
Yes, it is. I understand that. And so I think, actually, if the picket fences were, those picket fences were gone, and it was just a landscape buffer, it would be less obtrusive, and you probably would drive by it and not notice it as much, I would think, I don't know. I'm not a landscape architect, so.
You're not?
No.
You're a master gardener.
What?
You are a master gardener.
I am a master gardener, by the way.
Okay, so, okay, your motion was, can you reread the motion?
Nope. I don't read that.
Okay, we need to clarify your motion.
My motion was to approve adding the six-foot fence.
Existing chain link fence?
No, my motion was to approve adding the six-foot chain link fence, as been requested, but that we have a staff-approved, or recommended, approved landscape buffer around all of the chain link fence.
For areas that are bare, basically?
Yeah, for all of the areas. So that includes Adrian's, Adeline Street, Rio Villa, Leech, Baynard, so there's a land.
So all sides of the property? Are we saying all sides of the property?
No, I didn't say all sides of the property, because on Arika Street, there's already a landscape buffer and a vinyl pick, vinyl, a high vinyl fence. That's already in place. If that was around the rest of the property, and they were going to just replicate that, I don't think there would be a discussion. But it's not.
Okay, so that's your motion. Is that your second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four to one. So you have your approval, but you need to work with staff on your landscape plan, and they will help you come up with a way that it will look acceptable. Thank you. Okay, next, we have GA-07-17, which is a second reading of an ordinance, if you would like to speak on this ordinance, which has to do to the changes of Pontagorda Code, Chapter 7, Building Regulations, now would be the time. Would anybody like to speak on the second reading of changes to our building regulations? Seeing none, we will.
This is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only, An ordinance of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Pontagorda Code, Chapter 7, Building Regulations, by amending Article Roman numeral 1, Building Board, amending Section 7-3, Powers and Duties, amending Section 7-3.1, Penalties, Restitution, Fines, and Costs. Article Roman numeral 2, Building Contractors, amending Section 7-12, Application and Fees for Certificate of Competency, amending Section 7-13, Action Against Certificate Holders, and amending Article Roman numeral 3, Building Codes and Regulations, amending Section 7-31, Additions, Amendments, and Modifications to Building Code. Additions, Amendments, and Modifications to Building Code, amending Section 7-32, Violations of Building Code and Penalties, amending Section 7-35, Building Numbering, amending Article Roman numeral 5, Flood Plane Management Code, Chapter 1, Administration, adding a new Section 101.6, Disclaimer of Liability, amending Article Roman numeral 5, Flood Plane Management Code, Chapter 2, Definitions, amending Section 202, Definitions, Article Roman numeral 5, Flood Plane Man, Flood Plane Management Code, Chapter 3, Flood-Resistant Development, amending Section 307.8, Non-Structural Fill in Coastal High-Hazard Areas, Zone V, Providing for Conflict and Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you. I know this is a second reading, and we had made some grammatical changes the first time. I just would like to know from our billing official, how are we communicating these changes to our contractors that are registered with the city?
They'll be contacted by email, and a copy will be sent to the CDBI Association, also the Building Board.
Okay, thank you.
That's Randy Cole, billing official.
Randy Cole, building official. Any questions, comments on this GA-07-17?
I move to accept GA-07-17.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve GA-07-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
May I just?
Yes.
Just to move to, on the public hearing that we had, that the landscape plan includes Adeline Street, Leach, Rio Villa, and Baynard, includes all those streets where there are chain-link fence, or will be.
I'll get clarification from the recording.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, would anybody like to speak, would anybody like to pull anything first? Okay, would anybody like to speak on a, in any consent agenda item, which would be approval of the minutes of December 6th, legal invoice from Icard Merrill, a resolution, that's Bloom, right, Bloom Utilities? No, that's pre-annexation. The Loop Municipals, that's a pre-annexation agreement, and then the utilities from Bloom. If you would like to speak on any one of those items, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have citizens' comments on the regular agenda, which includes the award of agreement for banking services to Centennial Bank, the award of agreement to Kinley Horn for the transportation build-out study, and the award of the agreements for seawall installation for six zones, also the non-monetary donation policy, the update on temporary restroom facilities in Gilchrist Park, and the Puntagorda reverse osmosis third-party review. If you would like to speak on any one of those items, now would be the time, please come to this podium, state your name, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Bob Fritz, I live in Burnstour Isles, I'm here to talk about the seawall contracts. For 30 years, I've paid into the Burnstour Isles Canal Fund, knowing that the seawalls would be repaired promptly if they failed, and I would not have to pay additional money for them. Fortunately, my original seawall was not damaged during Irma, but as you know, about three-quarters of miles of seawall in BSI was damaged, not 15 miles like PGI, but still a substantial amount. Now, imagine a 10-car accident on I-75, a serious accident, then imagine a two-car serious accident on I-75, a half-mile north of the original accident. Would police and EMS only respond to the 10-car accident? No, they would respond to both accidents, but assign more resources to the larger accident. Another example, if there was a large structural fire burning in town, and another fire one-half block away in a single-family home, would the fire department concentrate all their resources and equipment on the larger fire, and let the single-family home burn to the ground? Of course not. They would have more resources at the larger fire, but also have some resources at the single-family home also. City staff is apparently willing to let the single-family home burn to the ground. Burnstour Isles suffered three-quarters of miles of seawall damage during Irma, not nearly as much as PGI, but still a substantial amount. Now, city staff wants to award contracts to three contractors for the repair of all the damaged seawalls in PGI, while awarding no repair contracts to seawalls in BSI. In fact, they want to start the bidding process all over again for the work in BSI, which will take months to accomplish. Staff mentions that the three contractors that are doing the repairs in PGI have reached their maximum bonding capacity, therefore, they can't do work in BSI. They only reached their bonding capacity because staff assigned them all the work in PGI, even repairs of seawalls on vacant lots. Staff could have spread the bonding capacity to BSI if they wanted to, especially by excluding vacant lots from proposal and using a stepped approach for construction. It makes no sense to me to be repairing seawalls on vacant lots while damaged seawalls on built lots are not even scheduled for work. These houses could lose pools, lanai, stocks, and boat lifts. Leave the vacant lots alone, concentrate on the work on occupied lots in both PGI and BSI. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on the regular agenda items? Now would be the time.
Good morning, Bill Hughes, Chair, Burnstour Isles Advisory Council, Canal Advisory Council. We've had several meetings, and staff has advised us how they're going about the repairs and the financing in Burnstour Isles, but there's been no date set, and recent articles in the paper seem to have an open-ended, so I would ask you to please, once you're done with the Burnstour, I'm sorry, with PGI, let's get a fixed date so we can start the repairs in Burnstour Isles. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Howard will respond after we're done with public comment. Anybody else on regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, do you want to give a quick response to that, or do you want to wait till it?
I'll wait.
Okay. All righty, then, we will move into the first thing, which is award of agreement to Centennial Bank of Puntagorda for banking services. I have a feeling she's going to be upcoming.
A little bit. Good morning, Marion Pace, procurement manager, for the record. Procurement solicited RFPs for banking services to several banks that were not only local but outside the area. We received a total of five responses, two of the responses, one with Bank Ameri, Bank, or, I'm not, Sun Trust and Wells Fargo, had to be rejected because they either didn't comply with the requirements, or they refused to provide courier services at no charge to the city for taking our deposits to the bank. We then proceeded into evaluation of the three firms, or three banks, which is Centennial Bank, Florida Community Bank, and then also Bank United. The Centennial Bank was selected as a top-ranked bank to do our businesses with. We've put together the agreements, and because them being, they're a banking institution, there's other forms, so even though we're asking for majority of y'all's signatures at this time on the agreements, there will be some forms that we're requesting you to authorize Howard to execute, once we have an account number signed, and that's basically when we will get all their signatures.
Questions from Marion?
I guess I would move approval, second.
We have a motion, a second, to award the agreement to Centennial Bank, all in, and give Howard the authority to sign on, was that part of your motion, Nancy?
Yes, yes.
And your second?
Yes.
And allow Howard to sign the paperwork as necessary, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Good response on that, took time, but procurement's on it.
Aye, local.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have award of agreement to Kinley Horn for the transportation build-out study.
Marion Pace, procurement manager, for the record. Procurement solicited requests for qualifications for these services under State Statute 287.055, which is the Consultants Competitive Negotiations Act. We went through the entire process, and the committee selected Kinley Horn as the top-ranked firm, and this will also be a master agreement to where the initial build-out study will be Phase 1, its own specific authorization, but we'll also keep them on agreement for in the future, if we do need to do any updates or revisions to the plans, we can go directly back to them. So staff is recommending the appropriation of funds, as stated in the funding section of the agenda item, and to approve the award of the agreement to Kinley Horn and Associates.
Questions from Marion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the award of agreement to Kinley Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, we have award of agreement to Duncan Seawall Dock and Boat Lift LLC, number 2, Marine Contracting Group of Puntagorda, Florida, 3, Shoreline Foundations of Pembroke Park, Florida, for seawall installation for six zones.
Marion Pace, procurement manager, for the record. Between Public Works and procurement, we went out for bid for the repair of the seawalls. Prior to putting together the bid, we did have a pre-release meeting, to where this room was pretty much full of marine contractors, and requesting their input, not only regarding how to proceed with awarding the work, but also discussing the bonding capacity, and, you know, if, to make, we needed to make sure that all the contractors had the resources and equipment and staff committed to do the zones. After that meeting, we went together and determined a structured methodology for evaluation award, excuse me, which is not only required by the city's procurement policy, but also highly stressed in the federal requirements. So we had to make sure that our methodology for award was not arbitrary. We had to identify exactly how we were going to do it. And Public Works provided us a list of the order of the zones, which basically was the, the zone on the top was the one at that time that had the most damage, all the way down to the last one was the harbor walk, and yes, BSI was Zone 7. And then we needed to make sure that the bidders, we didn't want to over, you know, to over-award to them, so we stated only a maximum of three zones would be awarded to each bidder, but we did allow them to identify how many zones they wanted to be awarded. And then we also had to take into consideration their bonding capacity. So once we received all the bids, we went through and we looked at their resources that are committed, then we looked at their bonding capacity, we even went back to them and say, can you please check with your bonding company, and just say, for this specific project, what is the absolute maximum? And the, two of the three came back with higher bonding capacity, so that was really good. And then also, we discussed with FEMA, based on Section 8.2, I believe, of our procurement policy, it allows us to negotiate with the lowest bidders if we feel the prices are excessive. Well, we did feel the prices were excessive, and so we did go back to negotiate with all three. One of them stayed where they were at, which was marine contracting, and the other two came down. So once we got all those prices together, we went to Zone 1. The lowest bidder was Marine Contracting Group, did they have the bonding capacity? Did they have the resources available? Yes, so we recommended them for award. And the next two zones, they didn't have the bonding capacity.